Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Well, six years on council and now running for mayor. Tell us a little bit about why you have chosen to seek this office right now.
Sure, well, I think that our city is in a critical time right now. We have a lot of things that have been started, but we need a lot of things that we need to continue to focus on. And so I feel that with the new four-year terms and also with the new pay structure, that's why you've got so many people that are running, right? Because they think that now they can have a job essentially. And that's like, unfortunately, I feel like that's the way some candidates are looking at it. And that's why there are so many. But I think that we need that continued leadership. And so when you think about the issues that are affecting San Antonio at multiple levels, like the federal funding that could be cut, the issues that we have been having with relationships at the state, et cetera, we have to have someone that understands City Hall and is able to run on day one. And I feel that I have had six years on council. I also feel like I've been through some of the worst things to have happened to any council member in general. And I would say in my district, we obviously had a lack when the air force base was there. People who received essentially at the time was a novel coronavirus folks, right? And so immediately I was thrown into the, what are you doing for us? Like, how are you going to protect us, et cetera? Then when we think about the recovery and how hard it was for the residents in my district in particular, because they were the frontline workers. They continued working. They were also living in multi-generational families. So that's why we had so many deaths in our families. And when we thought that we were going to go okay, and it was a second term, and we have the hospital closure on the south side. That was a huge impact again to the residents that I represent. And as if that wasn't enough, then the migrant tragedy. The fifty-three migrants that passed away in that eighteen-wheeler were also in District Four. So I feel like I have been at the, really, at the crossroads of that leadership, being right there for the community and exemplifying how San Antonio can be a compassionate city while taking care of our business.
You know, you're obviously absolutely right about how the, all those issues that played out in your district. The pandemic in particular, if I recall, it hit your family particularly hard, right?
Yeah, so you know, that's another thing, Josh, that I feel like I have lived through. A lot of things that families are living through. So one, obviously, COVID impacted my family. In two months, we had six family members that passed away. They all lived in zip code seven eight two zero seven, which traditionally has been the most impoverished area. My tia was a migrant worker. So my cousins, you know, they didn't have a whole lot of money to feed themselves well. And so they had diabetes, there was other underlying conditions, hypertension, asthma as well. And so those comorbidities associated with the quality of life that you live as a child came to light during the pandemic. We, you know, had forty-five cousins at one time with COVID. Fifteen of them were in the hospital throughout the different stages, like from one just entering to a few on ventilators at the same time. We had two mother, one mother-son, and then two husband-wife that passed away. And that's the first time that my parents used Zoom was to watch a double funeral. And so, and so, but again, it stemmed from those issues that families like the ones that still live in our present in San Antonio face. And then that's access to be able to afford quality food, even healthcare. We don't have much access to healthcare in San Antonio. We're still underinsured. Sometimes there is no insurance, and so it's very difficult. I just come from a hard-working family.
So all these issues, I mean, the issues in your district are also community-wide in many ways. But you know, you have some very specific and heartbreaking examples. But if you're elected mayor, what is the top, most important issue for you?
Housing. It has to continue to be housing, but I believe that it's connected to the other two issues.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing, yes. And in particular, we have healthcare. We just mentioned healthcare. I'll mention a little bit more the connection. But then economic empowerment through education. So if you ask me three words, it would be housing, healthcare, and education. You need to have a house or a place to stay so that you could be healthy. Health starts in the home. I mean, when we feel sick, we stay home. We want to be home. As a matter of fact, right now, I was telling Josh as we were coming up the elevator, that I'm running on an average about three hours of sleep for the last month or so. My mom broke her hip February thirteenth. She had a partial hip replacement February fourteenth. And it has been a mess dealing with, by the way, she has two bed sores because of the lack of healthcare access that she had. And so the place that she was at, so then she was two hours away. Literally, she was going to be released at three o'clock. She was two hours away from being released, and she fell because again, that attention wasn't there. So she has a laceration on her head. Luckily, there was no brain bleeding. But I've had to deal with all of this, right? So with trying to call people, ask for help, social workers that never called back, patient advocates that never called back, but they have me. And community members like the ones that I represent, they don't. And they're home by themselves. And after this, like, it's just, it's heartbreaking as an elected official to think that the residents that I represent don't have family members sometimes. So I am the person that they're hoping helps them. And that's, it's critical, right? So that healthcare is, continues to be, comes up time and time again. But then education, because the only way that you are able to have access to a better quality of life is that education. Giving our kids the opportunity to have access to educate themselves, to get better jobs essentially, to be able to ensure eventually when they grow up their own families. And then, by the way, take care of their parents, like me. I have been very fortunate because I have a big extended family. So we have a lot of cousins that I've pitched in to help my parents. But for example, I have learned a lot of these things even recently through neighbors that come and tell me their stories and say, oh, you know what? My mom fell too. Or my dad has Alzheimer's, right? And so as my mom was in the rehab facility, he kept getting out. He was wandering, looking for her. And so I have great neighbors as well that have brought him back, brought him back three times. But again, then my cousins were able to step in. But what happens to those families that don't have anybody to step in? And I'm just so worried about the state of healthcare that for a long time, I know that healthcare is not a city issue. I understand that very well. There's limited things that the city could do. But how could we improve that quality of life? How could we give access for others to be able to improve their own healthcare as a city? And that's where it's going to take programs like educating our children, giving them opportunities for mentorship, to learn from others, to want to aspire to have careers that they have never imagined or maybe aren't exposed to. And that's that third element of education that I'd like to bring in.
So just sticking with affordable housing, if you're prioritizing that, how do you do that? What are the, you know, is it, is it, any, obviously, we had the housing bond. Is it even a more expansive housing bond? What policies are, how do you achieve it?
Sure, one of the things that we have pushed for within the last couple of months, we learned that we don't have to wait another few years for the housing or for a bond, right? And in particular, we've asked Eric Walsh to figure out how we could get a housing bond going as soon as possible, a bigger housing bond. We were very fortunate that the residents of San Antonio voted in favor of a hundred and fifty million dollars for the first-ever housing bond. We've seen great success in that. We have to continue to improve that, get some additional attention to housing. I've had the honor of being the president of the San Antonio Housing Trust for the last three years. And February, well, a little over three years now, since February of twenty twenty-two. In that time, we have created more than seven thousand affordable housing units in every council district, actually, except one. And we are focused on continuing that type of partnership. It's going to take rated funding. It's going to take being creative, working with developers, showing them what the opportunities are so that they could invest in this. But it is going to be a resident-led investment by a bigger bond, in particular, a housing bond.
Which district is it?
That hasn't had it for the housing trust, the last, it was District Six.
Interesting. A couple of city programs, just to, you know, anyway, just to see where you stand on these.
Sure.
Should the city's Ready to Work program continue?
Yes, but we need a fix. We need a fix for it. We need to diversify the ability for our providers to make quicker changes, right? And so when things aren't working, I don't want everything to get stuck in the bureaucracy of meetings and having to get approval, et cetera. So we absolutely need to figure out how to make it work faster. It is life-changing. For those fifteen-hundred-plus families who have gotten better jobs, it has made a difference. But how do we get through the other thousands of people who haven't yet been successful? How do we move through it a little bit faster?
I feel like in the past, you've also said that you view it as specifically helpful to women and Latinos.
Yes, and so of course, we know that San Antonio has a Hispanic majority population. And in particular, single moms have benefited from that program. As a single mom myself, I could tell you that I would have loved to have had some sort of an opportunity to go through even that career matching that they do at Ready to Work to see what it is that I wanted to focus on. And, but beyond that, there's also single dads. And by the way, like these government employees that might be laid off at the federal level, you know, there's ability for us to partner them up with the people who haven't hired, with the employers who haven't been able to hire maybe graduates from the Ready to Work program. Maybe they were looking for a specific skill set. How can we match them up if we already know their employer needs with the people who will be essentially let go probably in the next few days or weeks or months?
Okay, the other program is pre-K for S.A. Do you support continuing that?
I absolutely support continuing pre-K for S.A. What I've been saying, Josh, is that we need to look at how we engage earlier, earlier even than pre-K for S.A. How do we expand that? And I say that because we know that there's research out there that shows us that learning begins at an even younger age. How do we have access to childcare partnered up with pre-K for S.A. to make sure that our kids are ready to learn at an even higher level? The City Hall has not had an education committee essentially on its own, like a standalone education committee, since Julian Castro was mayor. He's the one that happened to do pre-K for S.A. In the nineties, Henry Cisneros put together the San Antonio Education Partnership. That was critical. By the way, I'm a scholarship recipient of the San Antonio Education Partnership. I keep telling everybody that will hear me that it will take me an entire lifetime to pay back to the community what they have done for me. Because that was one of these programs that I was able to learn about college through, which communities and schools hand-in-hand, working with the education partnership. I'd love to see how we could have the education partnership, pre-K for S.A., and even Ready to Work come together, not necessarily merge, obviously, but look from best practices of what they've learned in their helping families and really put together a program that sees all the way through, right? So I know some of the nonprofits call it from twinkle to wrinkle. But, you know, it's, I know, it's really cute. I love it, by the way. I don't know who came up with it, but that was the best thing ever. But we don't have actually something for that older population. And unfortunately, some of our seniors, they have to continue working. So how do we leverage that and maybe make a fourth pillar to make sure that people have access to jobs that they can carry on? And we know that people are talking about having retirement age be beyond sixty-five years old. And how do we get that in a community like ours, which suffers with so much health disparities? So we keep coming back to the health, right? The health of our community.
So you and Manny drafted or wrote the Council of Conservation request for crisis nurseries. Is that still a priority, something that you'd still like to see happen?
Yes, actually, this week, I had a constituent reach out. And she was actually advocating on behalf of dads, single dads. And so she said, you know, we are always talking about single moms and the need for access to a crisis, or not, she didn't say a crisis nursery, a place for them to be able to kind of have some respite. And she said, I do that for my son when the relationship is, you know, going to that edge. And she said, my daughter and I go and we'll pick up the kids. That helps, right? That helps prevent from domestic violence situations being able to be witnessed by kids. One of the very first things that I did when I was on council was a ride-along. And that ride-along, we responded to a domestic violence situation. Though one thing that I remember out of that is a little boy yelling as his dad was taken, as being taken away in the police car, and him saying, I hate you, Dad, I hate you, I hate you. And it was just heartbreaking, right? That the child had to witness whatever it is he had to witness. And so I believe that crisis nurseries could be an additional level of support for families that are experiencing that.
You mentioned education. You said that with respect to healthcare, you know, the city as mayor, you would have like direct impact on healthcare, although you would, the mayor would, and does interact with metro health, which is a city entity. But with respect to education, why mayor and not school board then?
Well, I'll give you two things. First, I came before the editorial board when I ran for District Four, and I told the editorial board that it was easier for me to run for city council. It was more fair for me to run for city council than for the school board that I represent.
South San.
Southwest, actually.
But I remember you saying that, yeah.
Exactly, still hasn't changed.
And that's because why?
Because the way that they host elections, and I think you all did a piece about it, the way that they have their elections, it is, it's unfair in that the inner city is not represented, even though we have the same number of inner-city students. And so they don't contract with their county elections. They contract with, I think it's Lidl or somebody that does their elections. So like, I have to, and I did a Facebook post about this once, that I had to go vote twice. That was a joke, right? But it wasn't that I was voting twice, like, for the issue. I had to go and make an extra effort and vote for school board. Who's going to do that? Like, who's going to take the extra time to go out of their way, even to like a surrounding area to vote for school board? So it's very difficult, period.
Yeah, I think Gloria wrote about that.
Okay.
I think, I mean, maybe I'm misremembering.
But somebody wrote, yeah, exactly. So somebody wrote about that.
Well, can you just expand a little bit? As mayor, what do you think the mayor should be doing, maybe that hasn't been done?
Yeah.
With respect to education?
It's continuing investment in educational programs. You all heard last year when we were talking about, is there an ability to dedicate a portion of the city budget to services that focus directly on youth and education? We're doing that research right now. We are, I'm fortunate to have been put on that committee that the mayor created to see what can be done. This afternoon, we have a B session that talks about delegate agencies and just additional work that needs to be done. And in that, we really need to focus in on education and youth. And I think that the mayors that have been, I would say, transformational for our city, have focused on youth. That was, I mentioned, Henry Cisneros with the education partnership, making sure that students have the access to college and just to mentorship, opportunities that expose them to college. Pre-K for S.A., again, starting our children off so that they can be ready to learn on day one. And so how do we focus in on what the city can do, which to me are those wraparound services, is working with, for instance, the school districts? I was mentioning that there hasn't been an education committee at the city since Julian was mayor. He used to bring in superintendents. So the superintendents would give updates about what was going on in their school districts. Imagine being able to have been told, you know what? We're having attendance issues, so our schools might be closing. Imagine for us as a city council to have had that ability, to have the foresight to say, you know what? Those buildings might make good projects for affordable housing, workforce housing. Or you know what? How do we incentivize teachers to move into these areas where we need them to be? If the school districts aren't paying them equally, how do we incentivize them to work in the inner city? I think that's how a mayor can help with the education portion.
So you could see the city, like, we have, S.A.S.E.'s got a, in a recent winter, it's rightsizing.
Yes.
Consolidation. So you could see the city working with the district, perhaps use those vacant buildings?
Yes, and.
In some kind of way that's adjacent to education.
Correct, and beyond that, it's also the support services. And so for instance, our focus on STEM. And when we think about cybersecurity outside of D.C., San Antonio has the greatest concentration. And so the focus on cybersecurity but STEM-related activities. What are school districts doing to make sure that STEM is present? So for instance, Northeast I.S.D. has incredible facility. I compare it to our R-SAC over at the Port San Antonio. So they're bringing that exposure for the children to be able to learn about these different career programs. That would be a good thing to bring to the city as well. That connects directly with economic development. It connects directly with workforce development. And by the way, talent pipeline management. We have to start way earlier on creating a talent pipeline management system. A few, I guess it was maybe a little over a decade ago now, maybe thirteen years or so, when the state decided to do, you know, how the kids pick, I think it was H.B. Five at the time, where they pick their career at middle school now. STEM was one of the focus areas. But I don't think that we've done enough to prepare for that in the jobs of the future. So that would be another way, right? So as the superintendents bring in and showcase the programs that they're working on, or even their trade schools. Because we know that a lot of the trades right now are actually making more money than people with PhD, right? And so how do we focus in and capitalize on that, that the schools are already doing and working with, and expand their ability to reach more residents?
Okay. Should the mayor, Matty sits as an official member on S.A.O.S. and CPS's boards? So let's start with S.A.O.S. real quick. Do you think the city and S.A.O.S. is doing enough, too much, or just a lot amount, to protect the quality of our water supply? Not necessarily the quantity, but the quality. And we look, our board has taken, you know, been very interested in what's happening in Waho de Range. And so, you know, specifically, what do you think about that situation? But just in general, does more need to be done to protect the quality of our water supply?
Yes, we need to protect the quality of our water supply. When we think about how San Antonio continues to grow, Texas in general is growing, right? When we think about the fact that we're one of the younger areas, right, as well, we have the ability to grow still, and we have to continue to work on S.A.O.S. with S.A.O.S. on these issues. I currently sit as chair of the Municipal Utilities Committee, which was just kind of resurrected last year really by the mayor. They had brought it together, and then it went away for a little bit, and then we realized the importance, or the mayor realized the importance of focus on our municipal utilities. One of the things that I was able to learn through participation on the Texas L.I.C.M. Board of Directors, we had a water conference. And that was eye-opening because we realized that a lot of the communities that are experiencing some of these water shortages, et cetera, are in part doing it because of a lack of investment ahead of time. And so, but we know that San Antonio continues to grow. We know that we have the ability to work with our utilities right now, and we should be planning for the future. One of the things that I'm most concerned with is looking at how to increase the purple pipes. And so recycled water and looking at some additional sources. But not only that, just innovative practices. What are others doing? I'll reference Jim Perschbach over at the Port. So he has some really creative ideas. And he always starts out by saying, well, I don't want S.A.O.S. or CPS to be mad at me if I, you know, say this, but we should be looking at other things. And so innovation and research continues to be focal for me. And so I think that as mayor and as a representative of the city council on these utilities, I think that that should be our focus. But also working with the people that protect our environment, that are the leaders. I always say that we are not the experts at everything. If anybody thinks that there's the smartest person in the room, run away from them quickly. And so we need to ask for experts, ask for their advice, their research, and then make those very hard decisions for the future of our communities.
Specific to Waho de Range, do you have a viewpoint or position on that development and the discharge questions or issues around it?
I'm very concerned. You know, Mayor Nierenberg has been very vocal. And I feel like we, as a city council, need to do a little bit of a better job. I'll give you this example. Josh and I, I refer back to mayor, and the mayor is the appointed. And so realizing that I would be, if chosen as mayor, I would be the person surrounding yourself with the water experts is going to be critical. Yeah, that discharge is concerning, and we are continuing to learn a little bit more and prevent others from experiencing the same thing.
With respect to CPS, and it has, you know, done a good job of, you know, having the capacity to meet San Antonio's needs. In fact, it has more electric generating capacity than we typically need. So it's offset on the rest of the state grid, resulting in surpluses. And in the last several years since, you know, since I've been here, every year, there's been a big question of what to do with those surpluses. What is your feeling? Should it be, should they be channeled to like rebates to customers, CPS customers? Or does it need to be fed into investments in things like transmission lines and new power sources?
I think that we, it's not an either-or. I think that it should be a both. We should continue to invest in infrastructure for CPS, absolutely. But is there an ability to help, maybe it's not a rebate. But how else? Like, what could we be able to use a piece of those off-system cells to offset, for instance? And we know that there's a policy that says that we will make sure that we meet what we need before we're able to offer up any of that, back to CPS, for instance. But I think that we should have more of a focus on what are the communities' needs in general? Because we just focus on the off-system cells portion that comes back to the city. But I'm worried, right, about that other portion that CPS is investing in. But like, let's make sure that they're also investing in the things that are needed. They say they are, right? And so they have a plan. But I think that we need to have a bigger stake in the leadership, in making sure that they are doing what they say that they do. And in particular, when you talked about the rebate, the rebate that we did a few years ago.
Twenty-eight-dollar one?
Yeah, it was a twenty-eight-dollar one.
How did you vote on it?
I actually voted for it. And so, and at the time, again, to me, it was the residents of San Antonio were in a really critical time. And so I wanted to make sure that they got back, yeah, as much as possible. It was very, very little, obviously. But I wanted to make sure that they saw that we were trying, right? That we were trying our best. Now, the investment with the additional off-system cells that we're trying to do right now to prevent things from happening like happened during YURI is critical. One of the things that I learned during YURI, being on that Committee for Emergency Preparedness, was the fact that they said that there was some little element, some little, I guess, I'll call it a screw, but it's not a screw, but something that was made out of plastic that ended up being the faulty thing, right? And so how do we, how can we be proactive with that investment and continue to invest in innovation and technology as well? So not just in the current and looking at infrastructure, but a portion of that should, in my opinion, be going to look for innovative technology that will help us in the future as well.
Is there a faster, more coordinated way to do street closures? When people work on streets, when communities work on streets, it's, I'm just.
Yeah, so I advocated, I do CCR for the Public Works Dashboard so that people could know what was going on in their area. But Carrie, I'll give you a great example. And I actually just used this last night with the neighbors of La Vaca. I was at the La Vaca Neighborhood Association meeting. Josh knows this because he's a baseball fan. But I've taken my kid to every Major League Baseball stadium in the United States. We've gotten to watch a game. That was the bucket list. That was like the thing that I needed to do with my kid before he finished high school. And so took a lot of planning, but point being that he was able to see all of these cities and see what a thriving city looks like, see what a city with sports looks like. And also the historical aspects of it, the economic drivers of the city. So I turned it into a learning trip. So we looked for the history of the city. We looked for the economic driver of the city. And by the way, he would research this before he would go. Then we would have fun at the ballpark. And so in that, he noticed transportation. And so in that, he noticed transportation was critical. How good transportation really helped us, right? And not only the commute to and from, but even across the country. And so from Amtrak to plane to buses, et cetera, right? But in one of those instances, Twins Field, or Target Field, the Twins, where the Minnesota Twins play, I don't know if anybody has ever gone to it in here. But it's one of the most fun ballparks, by the way. But when you were exiting and my son noticed that it was all LED lightings and the LED lights, and he said, why can't we have this in San Antonio? This is great because the emergency situation would be so much faster to evacuate people. And that was a kid. Yeah, exactly. And so, but it was interesting because how do we use that type of technology but pre-plan ahead? We know when the Bad Bunny concerts are coming to the Alamo Dome. We know when the sold-out crowds happen. Why can't we implement some sort of a messaging system that by the way reminds residents, there's going to be a lot of traffic. We recommend you take Florida Street instead of go over to the next street, et cetera. And so that would help with the quality of life for the people in the area. But then also for, I'll be honest, just the accidents that happen, right? So some of the major concerts, when they have accidents, and the traffic's backed up even more. And so the reason that I use that example, for instance, is that all of the traffic lights were working in tandem and were working almost real time. I'm sure somebody was controlling it from somewhere else. Not literally how we have some of our SAPD officers trying to be at the box when we're trying to control traffic. How inefficient is that? And I, yeah, I think, again, back to technology, how do we use this? That's going to be one of the continued focus that I think that our city needs to make.
Here's a quick question.
Sure.
Just for, I just, those boxes at street quad, do those actually work when you press the button to speed up the light? I've never understood that part.
I don't think they do.
I've never thought so either.
Yeah.
Do other places without him.
It doesn't seem so, Carrie, is my answer, but.
The one we have here, I can tell you it does not. But what it does do is it makes sure you don't miss a cycle. Because if you don't hit the button, if you do not hit the button, the rock side will not.
Yeah, okay.
You have to hit, otherwise the next time the light turns green, you'll still have a dog outside.
What was your, not an endorsement question, but what was your favorite baseball stadium?
So I had to say our original Yankee Stadium.
That's right.
Oh, I'm sorry. But let me tell you why. Like, you walked in there and you just felt like Babe Ruth and Mickey Mantle and all these legends. And you're like, and then how's the Jeter built? I loved our Jeter, but not so much, right? And so, but I'll give you top three, Wrigley Field. And Wrigley Field, the environment just comes alive. And so with the, there's everything about it, the small businesses, everybody is in on the Cubs, right? And then, believe it or not, and I'm so sorry, Fenway Park, the Green Monster, right? But again, I think it's that culture that has been created because they've had their teams for so long. But it just brings a community together.
You were a baseball mom?
I was a baseball mom, yes. I actually, I'm a single mom, so I had to teach my kid a whole lot and so I had to learn the sport.
Well, since we're talking sports, let's talk about the Spurs.
Chicago, yeah, I knew you were coming.
There was a, there was an extra step.
Pitch that one, yeah.
So just, you know, just first, just a basic, philosophically, do you think the city should play a role in funding some, I mean, I'm asking the amount, but providing some funding to a new Spurs arena downtown? Do you support the concept of a new Spurs arena downtown?
Look, I'll start off by saying I love the Spurs. Go Spurs, go. The residents that I represent light up candles for the Spurs. They've been praying for Coach Pop. However, I think that we should not be investing our city's, our residents' money into this. I think that we have to have a plan that brings everybody to the table. It can't just be funded on one alone. So the private investment is going to be critical. We also have to look for opportunities, for instance, for sponsorships and the revenue that will be created as a result of moving this back town, back downtown. Let me, let me give you a further example of that. I was recently criticized by someone who said, oh, your residents can't even afford a Spurs ticket. Why would you be supporting that? And I said, the residents that I represent right now are very proud of their Spurs. One, it unites us as a city. But two, when a child gets straight A's, when a child celebrates a milestone birthday, they are taken to the Spurs game as a family. Like, it is a big deal. That is a big treat. And so, and by the way, even if they're not going to Spurs games, they're watching them. They're watching them at home. They're watching as a family. They have their TVs in the garage sometimes and I drive by and I see this. And so I feel that the Spurs have the opportunity to unite a city. We know everybody goes hunking downtown when there's a championship, the River Parade, et cetera. But I'm really worried about how, what the perception is right now about the way that it's being funded, right? And we have to continue to be transparent as your elected officials and we have to have these conversations. So last, or was it two weeks ago, when we had the conversation about the MOU, on Wednesday afternoon at B Session, I asked if there was an opportunity to change the MOU to add our council colleague from District Two. And I was told no. That was at B Session on a Wednesday. The very next day, an amendment, a written amendment was floated around to add the District Two representative, and that was a different answer. And so I asked differently, I guess I didn't write out an amendment. It wasn't prepared and so it wasn't the way that I was asked. But in the spirit of things, I wanted to make sure that District Two was represented. Then we ended up also adding the District One representative as well. They're going to be critical because, a few things. So the housing opportunities that could come with building workforce housing around this new arena, around the hotel, which by the way, a few years ago when I got on council, the San Antonio Hotel and Lodging Association gave me their numbers. And District Four had the most residents that worked at their hotels. And so those are jobs that are critical. I mean, I see, I left my parents' house the other day at 6:00 AM and there's a, they were carpooling. And so you could see that they were wearing hotel uniforms. And so it's critical for a big part of our community. And so how do we showcase that we do need these jobs? But also showcase that we need to make sure that the folks over at the Frost Bank Center area that were promised things that never happened, that they don't feel like they're going to be left even further behind. How could we leverage, for instance, the housing bond to make sure that people that live in the area have opportunities to be able to afford staying downtown or even aging in place through maybe owner-occupied rehab as part of that bigger housing bond? So it's going to take all of us. Yes, the Spurs are going to have to produce. Yes, we're going to have to look for different opportunities to bring sponsorships, et cetera. And then it's going to take creative opportunities such as the venue tax that is being worked on right now with the county.
So just, I wish to make sure I do understand. Zero city dollars or some, or are you saying some portion of city, but it can't be city?
Yeah, it would be correct, yeah. It would be a portion, like, we, I understand, we will have to help out. It's the San Antonio Spurs. But I don't want it to affect our taxpayers essentially.
I hear you, I hear you. I can keep going, or other, okay, I'm going to ask some questions here. So you'll answer this on the survey too, but.
Okay.
So please share how close the following sentence aligns with your view.
Okay.
All right. "In light of Texas's near-total abortion ban, the city should fund either directly or through a nonprofit out-of-state travel for abortions." Agree, disagree, strongly agree, strongly disagree? Who has that? I mean, the question really is, do you support?
City-related funds, right, no.
Okay. Let's try another one. So we just want to know if you, if this aligns with your view.
Wait, do I have to explain or no?
You can explain.
Okay, I didn't even ask, so yeah.
You want to explain more?
Yeah, no. So right now, there is the abortion travel, there's, which one is it? It was a city near that is being sued for that. And so I'm just afraid that if we do that by not partnering in it, it's city-related funds, that, you know, we will have the same type of situation.
Yeah, so yeah, actually, we do want you to explain.
Okay, sorry, because it's like, wait, I didn't even ask.
Yeah, one reason why I'm asking some of the questions here is because I realize on the survey, you know, you can, you just mark the answer. But here, you can put context around it, right? So here's a, so this is a refrain you might have heard just being on council. So just want to know if this, how this aligns or doesn't align with you. "The city is not cooperating enough with the Trump administration on immigration."
With the Trump administration's views or maybe explain what?
Actions or, you know, when it comes to?
I think we're cooperating. I mean, we don't agree with some of the stances. I guess, what were my choices again? Strongly agree or?
Well, just does that align with your view, you know? Do you share that?
It's mostly, it's mostly an opinion.
It's an opinion.
Could the city do more?
Could the city do more to work with the Trump administration on immigration?
Sure, yes.
Well, actually, the question is, is the city doing enough?
Should the city do more?
Yeah. Or should it be doing more?
Not good, it should.
Uh, like, are you talking about like using our police officers to help or?
Anything.
Yeah, no.
Right.
So, yeah, so, I mean, if it's blocking a street, et cetera, yeah. But I wouldn't want police officers going into schools or churches.
That's what we're getting at.
Okay, I'm so sorry, I'm like trying to understand the question.
We're doing as much as we should.
Yes, okay, yes, then yes, thank you, yes.
Okay, that's, yeah.
I'm so sorry, I'm kind of.
No, no, I mean, this is a conversation we've seen sometimes come up.
Yeah.
Like, one of your council colleagues has brought it up, right? So we're just trying to, you know, again, when you think about the survey and if reader, you know, if someone, this question is really more about the reader than my answer to that question, right? And so which candidate?
Got it.
Um, let's talk about the two-thirds public safety spending. Is that a cap that you support? You know, this harkens back to Cheryl Scully area. So what are your views on the two-thirds public safety's cap? And is, you know, is that a good policy? Is it?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we need to continue to invest in our public safety as a city grows. Part of public safety is EMS. People sometimes just remember police and fire and they forget that EMS is a portion of that. And so, for instance, with the hospital closure in the South Side, it added at least like a twelve-minute extra ride to the nearest hospital. And that's on a good day, without traffic. And so as the city continues to grow, we have to look at where we're placing different fire stations, for instance, and even more police sub-stations. We just have one that's coming up on the South Side, it's in District Three. But yeah, we, I think that we're, I think that it's a good policy for now.
I was going to ask, which hospital is that?
It was Texas Vista, the one that closed? Oh, which one, the nearest one is, Mission Trail, yes.
So you're okay with the two-thirds cap?
And downtown is also probably some of the downtown, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Should it be more?
No, I think it's just right.
Do you think that, that there have been candidates who have told us that contrary to the statistics would indicate, which is that crime is down, violent crime especially, but that, that those statistics don't really bear people's lived experience? What is your feeling?
Yeah.
Are we a safe city or should that be a higher priority?
Oh, it absolutely has to be a higher priority. I feel that people just don't report crimes anymore. And so you probably hear it, like, sometimes like, oh, well, I waited to have my police report taken for hours. And some people have experienced this. I have someone who told me, yeah, I'm on a bingo card already, a break-in, and I was like, huh? And so, yeah, he said, yeah, I've been broken into in District One, in District Six, and in District Ten. Yeah, and so embarrassing, like, to me, that was embarrassing. And it was like, ah. And so, but point being, like, back to the question on the two-thirds, I think that's why we need to continue investing. We need to make sure that we have, you know, police officers that are around when it's your emergency. People call 911 when they feel like they need help. And so they should be able to expect a stronger or faster response time. And if they just decide not to, like, so, so in one of the examples, he said, no, I didn't call the police anymore, like, I'm just going to have to go and pay for it anyway. And so to me, that's kind of like, okay, well, I guess you could afford to pay, right? And so you don't need something that documents for you to go and pay your insurance, but other people do. And so, and that was one of the things that I wanted to kind of focus on when you mentioned the, it's, to me, it's the perception of safety. And Chief McManus always says, nothing good happens after ten. Like, y'all have heard him say this all of the time. And I understand that violent crime is down. But what about the other things? Like, what about porch pirates? I see it all of the time still on Nextdoor. Did somebody pick up this package accidentally, right? That's a code way of asking, right? And I always say, did anybody see this? Mailbox thefts. I was block walking this weekend and there was a gentleman who was concerned about mailbox thefts, right? And so, and explaining, look, we're working on something all that's at the federal level. We're still working and this is what we're doing, right? There's, we just heard the CCR from Councilwoman Alita Gavito on that, on the clusters and lighting around the clusters. So it's the perception. And yes, there's actually a candidate who has had his truck broken into, or not broken into, I think, taken, or maybe it is broken into. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so, I mean, so he has lived it firsthand. But I do hear people are not reporting, they just decide not to report.
We haven't asked the other candidates this, but, which, you know, maybe I need to circle back with them. But this is a very, it's a big community issue, but it's also particularly pronounced in your district. So let's talk about the roaming dogs. You know, are you satisfied with what the city's doing so far to try to address this issue? What, if you're elected mayor, there are certain policy points that you would push off on the roaming dog issue?
You know, I feel better about where we're going with the roaming dogs. And I'll give you the example, as I'm block walking, compared to the last few years that I had been block walking, there's been less dogs. To me, I'm like, okay, well, so I guess something is working. But Josh, I think that's where we have to bring in education as well. And education is critical to everything. And so when we talk about the culture that we have in San Antonio, how do we engage with the, with different cultures to show them different ways that they could take care of their stray animals? How do we invest in more opportunities like spay and neutering, right? Programs that allow them to bring in their pets? So we need to do more. I'm very appreciative of, actually, it was Councilwoman Alita Gavito also that did the focus on working with our state ledge and Senator Menendez on the stricter penalties. But I still happen to have one of those homes with like the most dangerous dogs in the city. It's in the Rainbow Hills area. And by the way, when you look up the pictures, because now they have like pictures on it, it's like, it's very like, almost like PD, you know, like when they take the pictures. And so, but there's two dogs on there that I would have never, maybe I made the assumption that they weren't dangerous, right? Because they look like tiny little dogs, but I guess this could be the worst. But so I think that we're doing something, we're trying. But you're right about, when you all didn't ask all the candidates, I can understand why. Because in some areas, now that I'm block walking for the mayoral seat, there is zero problems. Like, I don't even like have to worry, like, at least like, I, 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 I think that at least in several districts, yes, it's prevalent. I was doing an interview the other day at Farias Park in D5 and there was a Chow that passed behind me. And I think the reporter was a little bit nervous. And so I had been there several times, I knew it was a roaming dog, right? And so I said, oh, no, it's okay, he lives over there, he's going to go back in just a little bit. But point being, right, like, the gates were open and so, anyway.
You've already, I think, you have already answered this in a couple of your comments, but who is the mayor, the past mayor of San Antonio, or there may be more than one, who you admire the most, who you admire the way you're running?
We want the top one, for sure.
Top one first, yeah.
The absolute top one.
Most effective.
Most effective.
Well, effectiveness can.
Yeah.
That could be different, I guess, so. Um, so I guess during my time, I think it would be Julian Castro. And I, maybe it's because he was inspirational because I got involved in his campaign. And that was the first time that I actually participated. And that was the first time that I actually participated actively. I learned how to blockwalk because of Julian. I learned how to listen to residents because of the campaign. And I remember sitting around a table late at night with a group of volunteers. There was about ten of us. And I remember that his brother, Joaquin, and his mom, Rosie, were there as well. Like, it was a family thing, like, everybody was in on it. And I was just so happy to be a part of it. So when he had his vision for San Antonio and he talked about pre-K for SA and he talked about education, my kid held up signs for pre-K for SA. My kid held up Julian signs. My kid went to San Pedro Park where he had his launch for the mayor's seat. Because he looked like me, right? Like a person who needed an opportunity and who was able to run now to be mayor of a city and make a difference for people like the ones that he's represented. So I'm just, I'm always gonna be grateful for the opportunity to work on his campaign.
I'm good. Any other questions? All right. That's it.
All right, easy peasy.